I call to order this special Minot City Council Minot Park Board meeting Tuesday, November 12th, 2024 at 1:00 PM. This time I just ask that you put your cell phones on silent or vibrate to out of respect for those speaking and out of respect for the discussion at the dais. Moving on to the agenda, item number one, roll call.
Lessen.
Here.
Fuller.
Here.
Janser. Olson.
Here.
Pittner.
Here.
Ross.
Here.
Samuelson.
Here.
Hammer.
Here.
Here.
Kirk Hammer.
Here.
Olson.
Here.
Schmidt.
Here.
Item two, Pledge of Allegiance. Moving on to action items, item 3.1, the Minot Park District half cent city sales tax. At this time, I will call on President of the Park Board Perry Olson. Perry?
Thank you, Mayor Ross. Appreciate on behalf of the Park District and the Park Board, the opportunity to get in front of you today and continue the process that we've been working here for a couple of years now. I don't want to steal all of our executive director's thunder. I know she's got a presentation ready to put together for or to show to you, I should say. But as you know, what we are requesting and where we are in this process is we have a question ready to go to the citizens about changing how we fund the park district a little bit, giving some property tax relief and being able to add another much requested facility we've found over the last few years. And part of that process is coming to the city council and getting the green light to go to the ballot. So I guess Ellie, you want to have at it? Ellie DeLaurier is our executive director for the Minot Park District. Thanks, Ellie.
All right. Thank you, guys. Thank you, Mayor Ross and Alderman, and thank you, President Olson and commissioners. I just have a little kind of presentation to kind of map out from you guys, how we started, where we're at and where we see us going. So as you know, as President Olson talked about, we are looking at a half cent sales tax for the Minot Park District in order to not only provide property tax relief for our citizens, but also to build a turf facility and continued maintenance of our park district facilities. So kind of a little history of how we got here. We started a indoor facility study in 2021 to really take a hard look at our indoor facilities that we offer as the Minot Park District. Some of the key factors that we wanted to come out of that project or study was community input, making sure that we're asking our citizens and user groups that are in our facilities and using them on a daily basis, and flexibility of facilities. We know that we only have so many opportunities with the facilities that we build that we want to be able to get as much as we can out of those facilities for the dollars that are put into them and our user groups and our community. And of course, they fill our mission for all ages and all abilities, enhance the quality of life for all of our citizens, increase the economic impact that our park district has on our community. So through that study, we had stakeholder meetings, and in those stakeholder meetings, we invited an array of people from not only our community and our user groups, just to name a few, baseball, soccer, softball, T-ball, after-school programs, area schools, Minot State, Minot Commissioning on Aging, Prairie Grit and Gymnastics, and the Minot Hockey Boosters. And that's just a small list that we had in those stakeholder meetings. Out of those meetings from the survey, you can see here, the top things that came out of that, number one was turf, number two was aquatics. This was before the property tax passed for the schools and that was being built, so that's taken care of. Number three was play, and I apologize on here, courts is actually number four, and ice was number five. So that was kind of the results just from the stakeholder meetings. From that point on, we had our community input meetings, where invited people just from the community to come in and give their input on the areas. And in the indoor facility study, the two places and locations we were really focused in on were the Mesa location and the auditorium. And as you all know, the auditorium is still owned by the city of Minot, but we do lease it from you guys on a yearly basis. And we really just want to take a look at those two facilities for indoor usage. So now fast forward to where we are today. In January of this year, we held a board retreat where we sat down with our board and we really got into what we see for the future of the Minot Park District, where we are financially, and what our goals are. We landed on the indoor turf facility, so the field house. Couple of reasons for this, we had some experience with the turf. We have turf that we put down at the Mesa in the spring and through the summer for our user groups. When the ice is out, in 2019, I believe it was, we actually had the Eckrink go down. We were able to use that turf, and that turf got used in the Eckrink just as much as the ice did. So we really see a big opportunity for usage and the input that we got from our citizens. Once we got here, we really took a look at where we want to go with that turf facility and kind of how we believe that we can get there is that half cent sales tax. We looked at a few different aspects, and it's the most feasible and the most fiscally responsible way that we think that we can get there. Just to take a look at what the inside of this would look like, this is the space out at the Mesa, so you can see our three rinks right now. We do believe that we would leave a space for future rank use if that would ever come down the line, but the field house would be on the end. This is 30,000 square feet. At this time, you could have a baseball and a softball group using it at both times. There's space for two infields. There is a suspended walking track, restroom, party room, and storage room in the plan that we have at this time. Once we reviewed the needs again with our user groups, we really hit on a few different things. We are not able to offer in a large capacity that we can now, that we would be with this turf facility. When we look at our fun zone that we have built in the armory downstairs, we average 60 to 90 kids per day there. That's simply just inflatables and yard toys that we open on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays for people to come and use for free. So unorganized play is something that we really want to be able to offer, and this turf facility would allow us to offer more of those opportunities for our community, as well as tournaments that we can bring in, creating economic impact, definitely having people from outside our town to come in and use this facility as well. Early estimates of this project are around $17 million. We have done some operating cost estimates that are conservative, but we want to come into this project eyes wide open as we move forward and definitely considering those operating costs. So of course, how do we get there? In talking about that half cent sales tax, the number that we are using is that $6 million mark. We look at that trending upward and helping to pay for these facilities that we have people come for our tournaments from outside community. Now the park district would be able to take a piece of that to put back into our facilities with that economic impact that we're able to use. And right now, the numbers that we've gotten from visit Minot, about 28% of sales tax comes from outside the city of Minot. So a bit of the breakdown on that, right now, we're looking at between 12 and 14 mils that we would be able to lower everyone's property tax. In 2025, that equaled to be about 3.5 million, so it's a 40% reduction in the park district's portion of the property tax. So an average $250 home, that's about $170. So along with a property tax relief, how we would get there is we would using the operating costs of our baseball fields, softball fields, Mesa, Roosevelt Park Zoo, and auditorium. So those facilities that are directly bringing in people from outside our community for tournaments and creating the economic impact, once again, we would be able to take some of that to put back into those facilities for maintenance and to grow those facilities. And while I'm talking about the turf facilities, another big part of what we see the sales tax creating for the Minot Park District is opportunities for maintenance. And I know speaking before you all today with the maintenance of the city of Minot and not only homeowners and business owners, maintenance is a huge cost to what we do. This is just a short list of things we know that we have to get done in the next three to five years. Auditorium roof, Mesa roof, we have a huge fix over the Roosevelt Park Zoo that will be completed, or sorry, Roosevelt Park Pool that will be completed in the summer of 2025. Shields complex grading, we have our beautiful turf fields over there with a beautiful new concession stands. But on the other end, for bringing larger tournaments, those fields definitely need some work, and those all cost to repair. And our Optimist Soccer Complex, our soccer program is expanding every year, and we know we need to do some work over there as well. So as much as we talk about building for the future, we need to maintain what we have as well when we're bringing in people from outside our community to use these facilities and for our user groups. And I just a list of future projects that we have on the horizon, and I'll kind of open it up for questions after this, but we look at Corbett Field. We know we have an accessibility issue over there that needs to be fixed sooner rather than later. Restrooms are a huge issue over there as well. We have our Superfund site that is coming down the line that we've been working with your staff diligently on. That's going to have an 18-hole disc golf course, cross-country running track, mountain bike trails. That would be bringing in people from all over, hopefully, our state as an attraction when we talk about our mountain bike opportunities that we have for weekends. Auditorium expansion, that's another opportunity that we looked at. Court space is a huge need that you've seen from our stakeholder meetings. That would add, if we're able to get that to that project, three more courts to our community, and pickleball courts for indoor use. Phase three of the outdoor recreation area, we completed phase two this last year, looking at a port and place inclusive playground, a zip line, a community orchard, challenge course, and an all-season pavilion. And another thing on this list is a field analysis, looking at the potential tournament growth that we can have, as I talked about, looking at soccer, looking at softball, and looking at baseball. If we were to be able to go after the possibility of a sales tax, what tournaments can we bring in to continue to create economic impact for our community? And more things when we look at this, we look at this as also a workforce recruitment and retention issue. You know, we believe quality of your parks is a huge part of why people move to a community and stay in a community. We want to continue to move the parks forward and move our community forward. So we are standing in front of you today, beside you today, to ask for the opportunity to put this on the ballot for our citizens to tell us in what direction we will move in. And after that, I guess I'll open it up for questions.
Are there any questions? Mike?
Thanks, Ellie. It was good to see the presentation. I appreciate that very much. So I want to make sure I got a couple of numbers right as you were going through, make sure that I caught them. Based on what you said, it sounded to me like you guys are running maybe 35 mils right now. Is that about what your budget looks like?
Yes. The 2024, we're at 36, and I believe 25, we are 35.7 or right around there.
Okay. And so right now, did I also read that right? Your authority right now is at 38?
Yes, we are capped at 38 mils for operating.
And so, and again, you guys, you guys have your own board. You guys run your own stuff, so it's not me questioning that exactly, but that's this discussion, right?
Absolutely. Yes.
So the question that I've got, if you guys give up authority and go down to 26, because I think that's the proposal, correct?
Yes, yep.
You would essentially be limiting yourselves now to 26 because you've got this other revenue source.
Correct.
One of the things that I get nervous about, and whether it's our friends in a finance department at the city, or it's Harold, as he's talked to us about it, we get a little nervous about downturns, and that sales tax suddenly is not what we think it might be. Now, we've been on a long run of very good years, and that's great. You know, we all hope that that continues. Do you, have you guys had that discussion? I mean, when you put that limiting factor in place, now all the maintenance you're talking about, and perhaps even your bond payments start to get a little hairy.
Right.
If there's a downturn and sales tax doesn't do what you think it does. So right now, you're projecting 6.6. If we have a year that's 4.6, where does that leave you guys?
Right. And we have had that conversation, and you're right. It certainly has a risk involvement in it. In our position, I believe, we're sitting at a calculated risk, and I think that's one of the reasons in, you know, go back to 2015, we had talked about this same thing before, and we were going to eliminate property tax completely and go to just a sales tax. I think that we have rethought that process and maybe looked at some partners around the state that went that route, and looking at this as more how we move forward with still having property tax. But we have talked about making sure that we're building up our general fund and having those, those safety nets in place if we can and moving forward. But yeah, you are correct, there is a calculated risk involved in this.
Um, Mike, I can speak to it too a little. I mean, we don't want to tax more than we need to, right? I mean, so there's that fine line that we have to try and walk and try and use numbers that we've had and try and find that spot and hope, hope for the best, right? Hope that it works out, but we also don't want to be taxing more than we need to. We don't, I mean, reserves are good, but we don't want to have tons of it, right? So, you know, finding that happy spot, that's kind of where we came down at. And, you know, yeah, it definitely changes it what we're looking at doing, but, you know, we're also trying to listen to what, you know, we're hearing from people and respond to that.
Right. If I can continue, Mr. Mayor.
Continue.
So, and actually, the opposite thought on that is that it also diversifies your revenue stream. So it's not all eggs in one basket, and you're not just relying on property tax, which, as we all know, has been a hot topic. We've decided to keep it local, right? So now the locals, and that's all of us sitting up here, are making these decisions. So, you know, in that way, I'm glad to see you guys looking in this direction because um, you know, in that way, I'm glad to see you guys looking in this direction because that is the, that is the hot topic around town and around the state. And so, you know, I, I think it's in, in that regard, um, you know, good on you guys for taking a look at this because it's a way to also kind of respond to what the public is asking for while giving them the choice to do something kind of cool for the city.
And Alderman, if I can just add to that a little bit, you know, we are also looking at, over the past two years, we've really taken a hard look at uh, all of our revenue sources and even our user groups fees. Obviously we want to keep them fair to everyone as much as we can. But really taking a balance of the operating costs of the facilities and how do we create that spot where it's fair to our user groups, but we're also moving to being able to offset that a little bit and being very diligent out of grant writing and our funding and sponsorships and our opportunities there. So overall, we've been looking to device or diversify quite a bit with our financials for sure and our revenue sources.
Mr. Mayor.
Rob. Thank you. Um, hi Ellie. Great presentation. I think you guys are doing a fantastic job. Two questions, I guess. One, um, how long are you planning to put the bond out there for on the building?
I may have to look to calendar list. We're looking at 15.
15 to 20.
Yeah.
15 to 20 years? Okay. Um, a couple of the phone calls I've fielded, uh, since this has kind of come up. People have been asking about the property taxes only a buy down for five years or only a um, reduction for five years. And they're like, okay, so then when that five years is over, we're still going to be paying sales tax. What's the plan then? Are we going to go right back to the 38 mils or?
Right.
And, and double dip, I guess, on everybody in town is, is what somebody said to me. So that's the question.
Absolutely. And, and we certainly anticipated that question for sure. I guess when we went through this process and we really looked hard at it. We put that five years in place so we can reevaluate at that time. Our goal at that time would be that we are able to reevaluate that and lower our property tax more at that time. Cause the idea behind this, when I talk about sales tax and we talk about economic impact. We are already mindful of the tournaments that we bring in. But I think when we, if we are able to look at this realistically to bring in sales tax, that's put more pressure on our staff to work with everybody to make sure we're giving every opportunity to be bringing in people to our community, staying at our hotels, shopping at our stores, eating at our restaurants. Because now we're getting a piece of that pie to improve our facilities and expand our facilities. So that would be my answer to that question is we knew that was going to come up and, and we understand it. We get it. We're taxpayers too, but realistically, the goal is that we would be able to lower our property tax more at that time because we're going to be bringing in more sales tax.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yep. Thank you.
Mike?
Just want to follow up to that Ellie. So I, I, although, although we're talking about there is the authority going back to 38 though, right? You guys, you'll, you'll be making decisions yearly about what your property tax levy looks like anyway.
Realistically, yes, absolutely.
At that point, it will revert back to the 38 mils and you'd have the ability to go up, but the hope would be
we can.
Next year you're lower and the year after that you're a little lower, right? I mean, that's the general thought on it.
Yes, correct. Alderman, bless him is we adjust that yearly as it is.
Right.
And we would be able to do so with this as well, as far as what we're having out for property tax.
So if I can continue, Mr. Mayor. So essentially right now, the five years is an escape clause that says, whoa, we missed something here, right? I mean, because, because really you guys will be doing your levy every year. That, that allows it to go back up. But my assumption would be you're not suddenly going to go from 25 or whatever you're going to be at during this period to go, hey, sky's the limit. We got the money back. Let's go do some things.
Correct.
I mean, I mean, that's, I think that's the fiscal responsibility that the public is looking for all of us to have. Um, no matter which board we're sitting on. And, and so, you know, I, you know, I trust my friends on the park board. I've known most of you guys for a long time. And so I think we all have the same thought process there, but that's truly what we're talking about, right? It's, it's just that authority that goes back in five years.
Correct. Um, Alderman, bless him. It's for maybe lack of better words, it's more than just a handshake and doing that and putting that in the ordinance.
Any other questions? Any other comments? Scott?
So my, my question on the, on the mill levy. Um, if your intention is to reduce that and keep it reduced, why wouldn't that be in the measure? So that it does, it stays reduced because I, I believe that's what our taxpayers are looking for. In property tax reduction. I mean, granted, I know that that's, that's your guys' intention is to, is to keep that at uh, maybe 26 or less. Why can't that be put in the measure that it is now your authority is 26?
Right. And um, Alderman Samuelson, I, I totally understand your perspective and your comment on that at this time. I think that we, we know we're taking a calculated risk and we want to make sure that we're moving in the right direction. And we will know that after five years where it's trending, if we go off the trend that we have been, we'll be able to lower that mine, that more at that time. But I do understand your perspective and your comment on that.
Any further questions? Okay.
Paul? Ellie, can you speak to, you, you talked about tournaments and, and whatnot? And, and driving, uh, you know, sales tax and stuff like that. What does the turf do for those things? Or are you talking about the, the maintenance and the improvement of existing facilities and what, what specific improvements are you looking to make on those facilities that'll drive those tournaments?
Great. Thank you, Alderman Pittner. Um, and you know, the turf facility as far as tournaments. The tournaments that we're going to be able to bring with that may not be the exact same size tournaments that we're bringing in with our softball fields, our soccer fields, our baseball fields and all of those things. I do believe there's economic impact there on daily events and even people from our, you know, area towns coming in because we've had a really great fall, but we all know that, that winter is coming and springs, let's be honest, can be a little bit tough around here. So for baseball groups, for softball groups, soccer groups, for golf groups. Having, being able to have that for them as an option to come in and use. We already see that at Corbett Field and at the South Hill Complex, our area communities coming in and using our facilities. So it will be creating economic impact with those. Um, and thinking outside the box, working with our soccer group, you know, we have user groups in the crowd today that have been a part of this process all along. And working side by side with them, it's like, okay, what can we bring in for a soccer three on three tournament for a weekend? You know, I think a lot of us as, as parents and, you know, grandparents. We chase our kids around the state for tournaments of all dance competitions everywhere. Why aren't we having those tournaments here? And we do have some, and I think for all those groups that are hosting those. The park district needs to be working side by side and making sure we're thinking outside of that box and bringing those in. And then it is alongside, like you said, Alderman Pittner is looking at, once again, our baseball fields and working with that group, our soccer group. Forming those relationships and ma, doing the maintenance that needs to be done and getting it done now rather than later. We don't have, we have really good facilities. Do we have the best facilities around the state? No. Is it the goal to be in competition with people around the state? No, but we are competing with them for these tournaments and we are competing with these people for workforce. So let's all work together and move forward on that.
Ellie, or anybody from the park board, can you talk about, I mean, this looks like a, a wonderful facility. Has there been discussions about, and when you talk about quality of life and about having something for our residents to enjoy? Um, there's a, there's a concern out there too, that a year from now or a year and a half after it's built, I mean, you've got two high schools taking advantage of it. You got all these. And all of a sudden, the only thing that's available for the community is the walking track. Is, has there been, are there safeguards in place that is going to provide opportunity for the public to, to enjoy it on a consistent basis? Other than just having tournaments on the weekends or whatever?
Um, thank you, Mayor Ross. I think one of the things that we have had our eyes open to a little bit in this process is definitely making sure that this facility is open for our community and for our user groups. And that's certainly going to be a balance. But sometimes I think we can get focused on, and we all can get focused on just, just the user groups alone. But that's when I talk about that free play and open for everybody, all ages to come in and walk and use the track and run and use it. That's definitely going to be a part of the scheduling and scheduling is going to be intense. I mean, we talked to our friends at Minot State with their turf. They could probably have that running 24/7. There still might not be enough time for everybody. So that will be a challenge. There's no doubt about it, but we want to make it a priority that it's open for the community. When it maybe doesn't involve a puck or a ball or anything like that, and just a space for kids and families to go have fun. And while I love all four seasons, like we talked about before, we need to have a space that people can go when it's in January and February, when the temperatures are, there's only so many layers that you can put on.
Mayor, I can maybe speak to that too, because you're, you're right. And I mean, that, that is important. You know, are your, user groups are certainly made up of citizens, right? And their kids and things like that. But yeah, I remember visiting, you know, other facilities like this and hearing stories how when they have it open that literally parents would just show up with their lawn chair, right? And sit down on the turf in January. And their kids would run around with the soccer ball, whatever it may be, and they're just reading a book, right? It's, it's just a chance to let the kids go have fun and right, so they're using it as well. And I mean, that Ellie's right, it will certainly be in high demand and scheduling will be, you know, the user groups that are here now are going to be all want the prime time and all that, but keeping it available for everyone is key in, in my book, right? I mean, it, it has to be done that way. I want people using it, you know, of all ages.
Thank you. And thank you. Any other questions? Paul?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, I just, I know this is just rendering, but again, like I questioned the, the ability to, you know, even three on three tournaments in this facility, there's no seating for anyone. I mean, it's just, it's, it's a turf and I'm not saying that's a bad thing, whatever. But, but again, I maybe, since we're all up here, even the park board, I'd look for your, the, the, the priority of, of, of these things, um, of these projects, whether it's maintenance and improvement of existing facilities and the new facilities. When I think of new facilities, I think of new maintenance, new costs. And I think those are all things that you guys are absolutely factoring in. But you know, when we look at our existing facilities, you mentioned at Corbett Field, accessibility issues. Um, and when that facility was built, 1950s, 60s, I mean, it's, it probably garners some, some investment. Softball complex, I don't know if I would trust Scott's new hip on some of those fields, you know, with the, trying to catch a fly ball behind first base. You, you, you might be in line for a new one again. Um, you know, soccer complex, uh, my, I think my kids have to stand on a bucket to wash their hands. And there's about a two inch gap between a stall door. Um, you know, and again, I'm not trying to pick on these projects, but when I think of those things that, that I as a user use and my kids use. I'd rather see those things invested in quicker than a new facility built. And I just want to hear from the board, what is that priority? Is that, hey, we're going to get this new facility built? And then we're going to look at these improvement of new things. What's, what's kind of the capital improvement plan? What's the, what's the five year plan on some of those things? And I'll look to anybody who wants to take it. So I don't want to keep grilling Ellie, so I'll let them.
I'll go first on that. I mean, we certainly have a five year plan, but we're also listening to our constituents saying that this is something they want. I mean, over and over again for, I've been on for six years now, I think, a part of the park district. And since we started talking about this three, four years ago, this has constantly come up to the top and it's, you know. I guess swimming was there as well, but as Ellie talked about with Minot North High School, I kind of took that one off the list. I mean, yes, some of those things you brought up can be worked on as well and will be worked on. They're on part of the plan. But we have to keep moving forward and we have to listen, I feel like, move, listening to the people who put me sitting right here, talking to this microphone. And it's, they want this opportunity. And this could go to a vote and they could say no, and that's perfectly fine. But I, I, no problem with that, right? But I think it's up to us to listen to them, which is what we've done. To create a, a plan, which staff has done a fabulous job with. And to turn it loose to them and say, you know, what say you? And, and see what happens with it. But yes, there are certainly issues at other facilities that, you know, are worked on when, uh, as the funds are available. We work on pretty tight, pretty tight budget. I mean, if this does, this gets to a vote, we're kind of at like a fork in the road, I feel like right now. Getting close, bringing the recreation over with the parks five years ago, it was a great move. That brought our mill level up. So we're kind of at this point now where are we going to bring in another revenue stream? While reducing property taxes as well. Or are we going to be kind of as Ellie likes to call it maintenance mode for the next few years? You know, if, if the people decide not to go this route, which again, excuse me, it's perfectly fine. That's who I vote, that's who I work for. So it, uh, it's an interesting, it's an interesting time. I, I feel like we've listened to them. And uh, now we're going to hopefully listen to them at the ballot box and go the route that they want.
There are any, Mike?
Uh, maybe for staff or Harold, can you, can you give us a, um, just a short picture of what our role in this as a council is? Um, you know, the park board's an elected board. They, they do their own thing. They make their decisions. But we have a role to play in actually setting this up and making it happen. And that's not necessarily a judgment on the project. It's more of a procedural role, is that, if that's the way that I'm thinking of it.
Yeah. So as you've discussed, you've, you've discussed the, the taxing capacity that the parks board has and it's capped at 38 mils, right? So by state law, they're only given authority to um, control that mill levy for pro, for property tax. They are not given any authority to levy any other kind of tax. You as the city council have other tools available to you, which includes sales tax. So the park board unilaterally cannot go and put a sales tax on the ballot and have it approved by the voters because they have no authority to do that. They would need the partnership of the city and the city council under your authority to levy sales tax to be able to do that. And ultimately that's what you're here discussing today is um, whether or not that's something that you're willing or interested in doing. Going forward. So that's the procedural. I, I have some other comments with regards to that balance and the mix of that, but we'll, we can talk about that in another question or another conversation, either at this meeting or a future meeting.
So are our options, we either, we either, um, and I know this is an informational meeting. Um, but that doesn't mean we can't take some sort of action as a council. I mean, to either uh, if we're so inclined to, because it has to go through two readings, correct?
Yes, that's correct. So um, Mayor, friends of the park district. Um, so next steps here would be for the council to consider directing staff to prepare a resolution calling for a special election for the electorate to consider the half cent sales tax. And then um, upon approval of that, staff would begin preparations on that resolution. We can prepare it for council's consideration. We'll finalize the ordinance and the ballot language as well as the election date and other logistical concerns as well. So that would be the, the issue before the council is to approve a resolution. The council does have the authority to impose the sales tax by approving just an ordinance on two readings. Um, but the proposal from the council, from the park district, and my understanding is it remains today is that you'd like to place it on the ballot for a special election. Is that? Correct. Correct, right? Yep.
Thank you. Thank you for the input. Is there anything from the, Scott?
So my question then, um, on the sales tax, does that go direct to the park board?
Yes. It, it would be collected by the city and then we would set up a procedure by which it would be remitted to the park district.
I have one other question if I could.
Go ahead, Scott.
Um, we were talking about the mills and stuff and did I hear, you guys now are at 34 mils?
Uh, we are at 36 for the 2024 and we're looking at like 35.6, 0.7 for what's for 2025.
Okay. So on the, on the measure, kind of the one that I have in front of me, then basically just the maximum is going down to 26. You can still be, I mean, from what I gather here, if you're at, you'd probably be at 24 mils if you went down 14?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Any further comments from Dias? At this time, would it, go ahead, Paul.
So I guess, Mr. Mayor and staff, you can tell me if I'm online, can we direct staff to put this on our next agenda for consideration by the council? So staff has time to prepare what this might look like and, and council has an opportunity to, to garner any questions or if they have further, further questions for, for the park board or their staff for next Monday's, Monday's meeting? Is that appropriate?
Yep.
So I, I'll make that motion to direct staff to place this on our next agenda meeting.
So that's the resolution that you're looking for?
To direct staff to prepare the resolution and duties ancillary to setting up the special election. Yep.
I'll, I'll second him, Kelly.
So we have a, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
I guess just, just behind that motion again, I don't know if I'm prepared to make this decision here today, but Monday is, is not too far away. And I think us having that discussion and if there's any other questions or comments, obviously Fuller has said he's had individuals reach out to them on their feelings of this. I think it's appropriate now that we've had a public meeting, um, that we give the public an opportunity to reach out to the decision makers and, and, and let their voices be heard.
Lisa, online.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, one of the questions that I would have would be who incurs the cost of the special election? Is that something that the, the park board incurs or how does that, how does that work?
Who would take that?
I guess at the end of the day, I mean, we have another special council meeting on Thursday to talk about things, but ultimately I guess that would be a question of whether the, the city would expect reimbursement for the special election costs. Or if the city itself is also anticipating a proposed sales tax increase for our own needs. Whether we split that cost or the city pays for that or how that, that's to be determined yet, but maybe Dave can shine some light on it.
Mr. Mayor, members of both councils, um, it would be a city election, so I would anticipate that the county auditor would build the city. So I would anticipate that the county auditor would bill the city for that election. And that would be something that I would anticipate could be passed through and maybe even paid for out of the sales tax proceeds once they start collecting that or some other arrangement with the Park District.
There was a measure like this like 10 years ago, right? Where there was a question that came from the Park District, where there was a special election?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Olson, that is correct. I believe that was maybe related to the Mark facility.
Yeah, Mark.
That was a little before my ti- time in this role, so I could sort of look back.
I wonder how it was done then too.
I, I could do a little research and see if we could come up with that.
Dave, do you have a cost estimate on what a special election would cost?
Mr. Mayor, City Manager Stewart, speaking with the county auditor last week, I think the estimate is around $11,000. That's just a kind of a guesstimate at this point, depending on how many polling locations they would have and the participation, that type of thing. So that's kind of the estimate.
Any other comments or questions or discussion from either the council or the Park Board members? Seeing none, we have a, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Call the roll or record your vote? Which one is it?
I'll call the roll because I don't think everyone's logged in. Pittner?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Samuelson?
Yes.
Blessom?
Yes.
Fuller? Olson?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Paul?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, and I don't know if there needs to be in the form of a motion or just a direct staff, but City Manager Stewart alluded to the possibility of another half-cent sales tax that the city has looked into. Is it, is it possible to have that on as part of the discussion next Monday's meeting? Or are we prepared for that?
Mr. Mayor, Alderman Pittner, I believe that's the intent of our special council meeting on Tuesday, where we'll be talking about the Police Department, Library and Municipal Court. I'm sorry.
It's on Thursday.
Thursday, sorry, I did say Tuesday, didn't I? Today is Tuesday, so Thursday, so in two days.
Okay.
So the plan was that this week you would have a lot of this information presented. So that way you could direct staff on how you want to move through those conversations and give us direction on what's priority and how you want to approach it.
If I can continue, if we, if we, we have a meeting on Thursday, is that too late to have it on the agenda for, for action for Monday? And are we going to maybe be putting the cart before the horse with a half-cent sales tax for, for parks? And then the city is going to come in after the fact? I, I don't want to, I, I think if anything, these two should be somewhat at the same time. Just my opinion, but I'll.
Yeah, at the end of the day, it's the council needs to direct us on how much time you need to weigh through that decision before you're comfortable moving forward. But I don't know that staff would be ready from Thursday to Monday of having a resolution for a public safety sales tax on Monday night's agenda.
And Alderman Pittner, would you be contemplating too that that would be a sales tax that would be considered by a special election? Or would it be just a council item to approve an ordinance?
My, my assumption would be, my feeling would be it would be by special election. But again, that, that takes many different forms, that maybe it's a one-cent sales tax in a partnership. And I, I don't know, I'm not saying that's the plan, but we, we eliminate those possibilities if we move one forward without the other, if that's the case. But just trying to be, go down that rabbit hole.
Mike?
So just to clarify though, we've got, we, if we, if we move forward on Monday night with the motion we just brought, which is we are going to take this up, the second reading for that, because that would require two readings, we could at that point sync that up, right? We could delay that, say, to the first meeting in December or, or the second meeting and, and sync those two if we could get there. Does that make sense?
So I don't think the resolution would require a second reading, that's just for ordinances. Correct me if I'm wrong, Pete, but as, as I've read it, resolutions only require one reading. It's the ordinances that require two readings. So what's passed for the, calling the special election would be a resolution of the council, but it would require a super majority vote.
Okay. And in that, in that, what is that in this case? Is, so we have seven, is that a, is that a five?
Five, yes.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, just a, a little thing to be a little bit cautious of. We've been very deliberative in this process and crafting this ordinance for this potential half-cent sales tax because portions of our existing sales tax is used to service debt related to flood control. And we're very cautious about changing those two pennies of sales tax because we have those outstanding bonds. So we have to be very careful with that. Going forward, it's crafted right now as it is a third, it's half of a third penny, if you want to look at it that way. So we just need to be very careful so we don't create any confusion going forward that if we were to come with a public safety sales tax, that that is completely separate and different from the first two pennies. So handling these two items, the Park District half-cent sales tax and a potential public safety sales tax completely independently, now adds another layer of complexity with that third penny, if that makes any sense at all, in the administration of it as well. In addition to that, the resolution to move forward with the sales tax would be subject to referral by voters before an election could happen. So there's some different things that can happen between now and an election too. So if we proceed completely separate with two half-cent taxes, each one would have its own deadline for potential referrals before going forward too. So that starts to get really complicated in a hurry if they're completely separate, if that makes any sense.
So Dave, just a clarification then. So if, is what you're saying, if we move forward Monday night with this, and let's say the first meeting in December, we moved forward with a separate city one, would it be difficult to get them onto the same ballot? Is that what you're saying? Or it just gets a little complicated because the dates are different?
Mr. Mayor and Alderman Blessom, it's not impossible. And I would anticipate that if that is how things happen, that they would be on the same ballot, the same election. Then we would have to decide, is each half-cent a separate measure on the ballot? So one could pass and one not? Or are they together and it's a single one-cent sales tax with 50% of proceeds benefiting the park and 50% the public safety? So those are some additional questions that we'll have to work through and discuss on how we want to proceed.
So just, so the resolution that we passed today, that's directing staff to come back to the council on Monday, is that with an ordinance?
So the motion that's on the table today is to direct city staff to prepare the resolution for the council's consideration. And then we'll prepare that for your consideration for Monday. And then alongside that, we'll prepare ballot language for consideration as well and approval. And then the ordinance is what will be implemented if it's passed.
Okay, okay, okay. That makes sense.
So next, next Monday is where we will have a resolution prepared calling for the special election. And so then we'll have the ordinance alongside it as well as the ballot language. And so the ballot will be, the ballot language will be approved by the council at the next meeting. Does that make sense?
Yes, yes.
Yes, alongside a resolution calling for the special election. So we haven't really prepared the resolution yet, but we have the, the ballot language and we do have the ordinance as well. So we would just finalize those documents, they'd all be presented to the council on Monday.
Okay. I'm, yes, we'll work with you to get that done. Sorry, I didn't understand right away, so.
That's okay.
So the resolution only needs one vote?
The resolution needs one vote, but the, so the ordinance is what's being considered by the electorate. Does that make sense? So, but if the council has any recommendations that you want to make to the ordinance, we could consider those on Monday too.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question?
Very.
So we're talking about, you say, public safety half-cent is being considered? And we have our half-cent and then, but the question, it's possible could end up being on the ballot, that it's a, it's a one question for one additional penny? So it's either both or neither? Is that what it's? Editor?
No, I see that as a, no, that, that was brought up, I think, as just an option. I mean, those are, you know, I can't speak on behalf of the rest of the council, but
Yeah, no, I get that.
Those are, those are options that are on the board. It can be, it can be two half cents, two separate issues.
Two separate questions.
Or it could be one.
And that decision lies with the city council?
Well, I think it, it lies with the city council directing staff on how we wanted to move forward. But right now, if, if I mistake and please, please step in, Steph, that, I mean, right now, we've directed staff to prepare the resolution just on the half-cent for the parks. Am I correct? That's what we're going to be dealing with on Monday?
Yes, as of right now, that's what's, that's what's before us, is separate ballot language is what I've, I've always been under the assumption of. I've never, I've never contemplated combining that ballot language. But you could pose two questions for the electorate in the special election and a yes-no vote on both of them. So one could pass, one could not pass. It's just, we would just have to figure out the logistics for it.
If I may, Mayor and Council, when we were drafting the proposed, or there was some collaboration crafting the proposed ordinance, we kind of defaulted to the present ordinance is the Park District ordinance, so that it doesn't get kind of confused with. And if you try to, and I tried to make it open and be able to be added to by the city if there's some need for another half-cent or something. But then, you know, the preambles and everything like that gets super confusing. And, and, you know, and became unwieldy in my opinion. And I don't want to speak for Steph, but we ultimately landed on the one proposed ordinance and will work on a resolution. And I guess I would suggest you probably look at a second proposed ordinance if the city has something that they're going to be bringing forth to the electorate. Just to avoid confusion moving forward. Because the city, if it's a city ordinance, will likely want the flexibility to be able to add to it and, and/or reduce it or whatever. And if you have, if you have the Park District side of it with all that language and it's going to get confusing in my opinion, it's just my opinion.
Thank you, Pete. Is there any further discussion? Paul or, okay, so.
If I may, is there any questions about the actual ballot language that's on the, the agenda for today or the ordinance? Are there any proposals for changes for that? If not, it'll remain relatively unchanged. We'll do kind of a final staff review of it too and just make any tweaks if there's anything that we see in between here and there. But substantively, it'll remain very much the same. We'd of course brief you on any substantive changes that would arise between here and there.
Okay. Any further discussion from the, from the council or Park Board?
Mr. Mayor, I'll just say thank you for the time this afternoon and for city staff and park staff as well.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Park Board members. Appreciate it. This time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
You're moved.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, we are adjourned.